Oh, you guys can't respond. Just shake your head if you can hear me, please. Okay. Hey, Jason, Dave's gonna have to unmute his mic to open the meeting.
Yep, that's where I'm trying to mute him. It's okay. So here we're muted. And we are rolling. So now it should be Dave.
I can't hear.
Here, can we have one call, please?
Okay. One moment. Okay, you have... One, two, three, you have twelve. Okay, you have twelve present.
Twelve present and zero absent.
Okay, we have twelve present, zero absent.
It looked like everyone was here, so, um... Mr. Morgan, would you like to lead us in the prayer?
You bet. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So now is the time for any public comment on any items on the consent agenda. And I do believe, before we go to the phone lines for this, we have some comments that were emailed in or dropped off. Would the clerk please read those comments?
One second, Dave.
Okay.
You're gonna have to read them up here because it can issue more.
Yeah, you're correct.
Maybe at home, I just hope you have patience with us this evening. This is a thing for all of us, so we're gonna take it. We're... Thank you. Just hang in there.
Colleen's gonna read into the record the comments that we have received from my computer.
We received a comment from Travis McAdam at 61 Wathena Drive regarding Communication He says, "Dear Commissioners, I am writing to express my opposition to the effort to restructure local government to reduce the number of commissioners and employ a city manager. We currently have a great democratic-based system with the district approach. As a community member, I have incredible access to my commissioner because he essentially comes from my neighborhood. Because of this, that access, our current district-based model provides a type of direct representation that the proposed changes lack. As for employing a city manager, it sounds good in theory. However, I have seen in multiple communities around the state that a city manager position often hurts the power of the commission and mayor, or the chief executive, in our case, over time. As the city manager takes over more of the day-to-day tasks, our elected officials become more figureheads than policymakers. Under our current system, if community members are unhappy with commissioners or the chief executive, there is a clear way to address it through voting people out of office. With the city manager, there is no direct democratic action to take. The position can easily become too powerful and insulated. I would much prefer to see our elected leaders continue making decisions. Thank you for your consideration, and please vote against any efforts to change our current system. Sincerely, Travis McAdam." The next one is from John, is Dr. John W. Ray, and it's regarding Communication Number 2020-152. States, "I wholeheartedly and completely support the idea advanced by Mr. Morgan of having a virtual public meeting on the consent decree on April 15th. I do so for the following reasons. Number one, people will have ample opportunity to comment in writing on or before April 15th. Citizens will also be able to call in during the meeting. Number two, there has been, since it was released, abundant and ample opportunities for citizens to make their views known. The positions and arguments on both sides have been fully expressed, and I don't see... And I don't see what would be gained by waiting for months in order to afford members of the public the physical opportunity to speak before the council. If the goal is advantageous public input, that can be done on or before the meeting. Three, it is time to move on this thing. Delay can lead to an unraveling of what people have worked long and hard to produce. Please remember, until this is filed with the court, parties to the decree can change their minds. Oil is down to $20 a barrel, which could lead oil companies to rethink company largeness. A recent Pacoanis decision stipulates that Superfund cannot require remediation of smelter dust, which accounts for much of the problem in Butte homes. Do we want to take that chance to have to go back to square one, or to have to settle for an EPA Unratel Order? The ban on public meetings could last for months. Why wait? What will be gained? What could be lost? Number four, based on my research, it would comply, given these extraordinary times, with both the spirit as well as the letter of Montana's open public meeting and public comment requirements. Number five, the previous afforded opportunities for the public input, community meetings, public meetings, et cetera, that have already been held on the consent decree, go far beyond anything that is required. For example, these opportunities for public input go far beyond what was done for the mine-flooding OU consent decree. There are no legal requirements to have all of these opportunities for public input prior to the county's signature. Therefore, I applaud the idea of holding a virtual public meeting on April 15th. Thanks to Mr. Morgan, I ask the Council of Commissioners to fully endorse his proposal." Dr. John W. Ray. The next public comment is from Carol Lynn Hines of 602 West Broadway, Butte, Montana, and is regarding Communication Number 2020-132. "To whom it may concern, I am writing to you to voice my opposition to the current suggestion the Butte Silver Bow Commissioners restructure. There are several reasons for my opposition. Number one, this move reduces the democratic progress by taking the power out of the hands of the voters and putting it in the hands of the select few, in the indirect opposition to the U.S. Constitution. Number two, having members at large leaves..."
The sound is completely gone.
I boosted it up. Should I boost it down? Okay. Number two, having members at large leaves room for the lack of accountability and transparency. Number three, having a city manager instead of a chief executive completely eliminates the executive branch of the checks and balances system. Number four, given the current pandemic crisis, voters of Butte Silver Bow do not have the opportunity to acquire accurate information or research in order to make an informed decision on the matter. Number five, additionally, this very issue was decided by the voters in 2014. Their clear and educated vote was no. Thank you for your time and consideration. Carol Lynn Hines.
Mr. Chief Executive, I was wondering if that could be reread again, just so we make sure we get the entire letter on the record, if that's possible?
I can.
Yeah, maybe we should. The sound cut out for most of that letter, so if you could just reread it one more time, I'd appreciate it.
You bet.
Speak as loud as you can.
This public comment is from Carol Lynn Hines regarding Communication Number 2020-132. "To whom it may concern, I am writing to you to voice my opposition to the current suggestion the Butte Silver Bow Commissioners restructure. There are several reasons for my opposition. Number one, this move reduces the democratic process by taking the power out of the hands of the voters and putting it in the hands of the select few, in direct opposition to the U.S. Constitution. Number two, having members at large leaves room for lack of accountability and transparency. Number three, having a city planner instead of a chief executive completely eliminates the executive branch of the checks and balances system. Number four, given the current pandemic crisis, voters of Butte Silver Bow do not have the opportunity to acquire accurate information or research in order to make an informed decision on the matter. Number five, additionally, this very issue was decided by the voters in 2014. Their clear and educated vote was no. Thank you for your time and consideration. Carol Lynn Hines." The next public comment is from Steve Willman of Butte, Montana, regarding Communication 2020-152. It's addressed to Council Commissioners, Courthouse 155 West Granite, Butte, Montana, regarding the consent decree. "Dear ladies and gentlemen, I am writing in support of the consent decree. Strong support. Now is the time. I have followed the newspaper articles, editorials, guest opinions, and letters to the editor closely. I have also attended several public meetings. In addition, I have hiked and biked in amazement through current and future remediation sites. I support moving forward on the consent decree. I am excited about the waste removal and amenities it will provide, not to mention the jobs it will maintain and create. I would request that you approve the CD. Thank you for your time. Steve Willman." The next public comment is regarding two communications, is from Ed Bandarob of 2601 Grand Avenue, regarding two communications, 2020-147 and 2020-151. Starts in with Communication Number 2020-147, requesting preparation of requests and authorization of same for emergency funding to deal with coronavirus in Butte Silver Bow, that the Unified Health Command give regular update to this council and the public, and that this council discusses the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic situation. I agree with Council Chair Morgan that our council should only be receiving requests that truly need council action. This request truly needs BSB council action immediately. Thank you for noting that the concerns of the citizens of the greater Butte Silver Bow community. The people look to our Council of Commissioners and the members thereof, not only for governance, but also for neighborhood leadership during these trying times, so I ask, is our local Unified Health Command in the process of implementing the South Korea evidence-based effective model to control the spread of the coronavirus? If testing kits and other critical equipment and supplies are not forthcoming from the CDC and FEMA, has our local government requested that the governor of the state of Montana contact the government of South Korea and ask for aid? Has the Unified Health Command put out a call to local fabricators and cottage industries to make respirators, ventilators, hazmat suits? Every first responder and healthcare provider should have these sets of hazmat PPE, one on, one clean, and one being washed and dried. You do not see the South Koreans running around in surgical gowns and other vital equipment and supplies if they are not available from other sources. Why has no one talked about 1950-style radioactive personal dust decamination procedures when returning home? A practice that might be very effective keeping the virus out of one's own home. Is our hospital putting up temporary walls to create isolation wings? Why is our council not asking for regular open updates from the Unified Health Command and talking about what they are... And talking about what they, as commissioners and neighborhood leaders, can do to assist? As stated in the communication, fear and panic are magnified by obscurity and uncertainty, and are calmed by knowledge, understanding, and preparedness. I commend this local and state government for making the hard decisions that hopefully will keep us all safer. The knowledge that our hospital and the Montana Tech Department are collaborating... Okay. The knowledge that our hospital and the Montana Tech Nursing Department are collaborating, and that groups are sewing masks to prepare for calming. I commend CEO Palmer for Communication 2020-151 requesting to be allowed to enter into necessary professional service agreements due to quarantine and isolated measures. I commend CEO Palmer and the Finance and Budget Director Gleason for building back the Butte Silver Bow reserves so BSB has the funds needed to initiation deal with the crisis. But the uncertainty of not being informed regularly by BSB Unified Health Command and/or our BSB council as to what the local situation is and what actions are being undertaken locally to prepare is unsettling. Not seeing our commissioners even discussing what they might be doing to inform and insist to is also unsettling. Not knowing if anyone is coordinating a call to local fabricators to cobble together makeshift ventilators when they will be needed, and if a call has been put out for cottage businesses to sew together personal protective hazmat-type suits with hoods for our first responders and healthcare providers when they will be needed is unsettling. Again, thank you, CEO Palmer, for informing us last week of the state of Montana and the local health director's mandates. But I am sure the citizens of Butte Silver Bow, and hopefully this council, will appreciate regular news releases and briefings as to what is the local situation and what is being done locally by our Unified Health Command and this government to prepare." From Ed Bandarob. And the final comment is from Mike Pathhousen from 1500 Harrison Avenue, Butte, Montana, and it is regarding Communication Number 2020-152. "Chief Executive Dave Palmer and Council of Commissioners, I found the article in today's paper insulting to my peers in the engineering community, in the engineering community, and to all of those who have poured themselves into this consent decree. I also took offense on your behalf, as your character seemed to have been called into question as well, which has prompted me to follow up with you from my prior email. I implore you to trust the engineers, lawyers, technical professionals, and consultants who have poured their souls into this document. Many of you are county people being hired directly or indirectly. If anyone deserves your trust, it is them. Attached below is an oath of an engineer, which every engineer says upon graduating, since integrity of the industry is being questioned. I politely ask you to read the following. I am an engineer. In my profession, I take deep pride. To it, I owe solemn obligations. As an engineer, I pledge to practice integrity and a fair dealing, tolerance, and respect, and to uphold devotion to the standards and dignity of my profession. I will always be conscious that my skill carries with it the obligation to serve humanity by making the best of use of the earth's precious wealth. As an engineer, I shall participate in none but honest enterprises. When needed, my skill and knowledge shall be given, without reservation for the public good, and in the performance of my duty, and in the fidelity of my profession, I shall give my utmost." Lastly, and most importantly, with the macroeconomic outlook being so bad and news being so bleak, the council is holding the keys to some positive news to help ignite Butte's economy. I again respectfully ask that you call for the vote and vote yes to allow Dave Palmer to sign the CD. It is what I and the majority of the business owners believe is in the best interest of Butte. I repeat again, gritty people do gritty things when gritty things need to be done. I believe this is one of the moments, and this is exactly why your constituents trusted in you with their votes. "At best regards, Mike Pathhousen." That's the end of the public comments.
Good, thank you, Colleen. So that's the end of the written public comment. And now, we're gonna go to the phone lines, and if there's any public comment on any items on the consent agenda, they're free to dial in now at 497-5009. We'll give you a couple of seconds, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Morgan to handle the phone line up in the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll open the phone lines, and I believe they will just start coming in as we receive the phone calls. Hello, welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Evan Barrett, 807 West Silver Street. I wondered if you... I had to turn your sound off just now to avoid feedback. Can someone give me a thumbs up that you're hearing my voice? Are you hearing what I'm saying?
I am, yes.
Okay. Now, well, anyway, I'm calling relative to Communication 2020-152, for which there is a recommendation on the consent agenda to concur in place to file. One of the problems with this communication is that it sets up a process that ends April 15th. Let me quote directly from the letter. "We are extending the time to provide more input through April 15th," end quote. Further, the communication does not set up a process of multiple opportunities. It calls for a single read to take public comment on the record. Again, the communication is not scheduled for a series of meetings, but, if I quote from the communication itself, it's a call for, quote, "A public meeting to receive comments on the Butte Priority Soil CD for April 15th, 2020," close quote. This communication, as you are asked to concur in, also says, quote, "We cannot delay our action on the Superfund CD indefinitely," close quote. As far as I know, no one is looking for an indefinite delay. I certainly am not. My request to the council is simply that we adjust our timelines and events for public on-record comments to fully take into consideration the health challenges, and therefore the public participation limitations related to the pandemic. Butte has an aging population. I would suggest that a disproportionate number of folks interested in commenting on the CD are in the high-risk group like I am. It is unconscionable to pressure those folks, including me, to meet a deadline that does not exist. At this point, there is no deadline on exception public comment on the record, unless you concur in the communication, which would establish a deadline of April 15th. Previously, the council had indicated it would allow the time that was necessary for folks to be formally and publicly heard in person, so why not take the time? Who is insisting on the rush? Again, a close read of the actual request in the communication shows that the council, if it concurred in this communication, would be agreeing to take comment in a single public meeting and takes that comment only through April 15th. Now, after we were also summarily sent home last month by the chief executive and the county attorney, without being able to comment after sitting for more than two hours, we were told that we would have multiple opportunities to speak on the record. I know that many, if not all, of you on the council were not comfortable with the decision and actions that night. An April 15th meeting was then suggested, before the coronavirus set in, as a starting point for opportunities to speak on the record. However, if you concur in the communication, as is written, April 15th has become a single opportunity and an ending point, according to the actual language in the communication. And further, that ending point is being pressured on us and you, in the face of the fact that folks cannot aggregate for a public meeting under the conditions of the governor's orders. Again, I suggest that the communication be pulled from the consent agenda and tabled for now. Let's take the time to get this public participation process figured out before setting a structure in place, given that we are in the worst public health emergency in over a century, a crisis which severely limits full public participation, especially among the elderly, at-risk population in Butte. Let's try to be fair to the people of Butte, not just be responsive to an imposed sense of urgency about something that has been 30 years and it works. Let's take the 30, 60, 90 days, or whatever it takes, to allow Butte folks to be heard. The parties have heard each other behind the negotiating curtain for 12-plus years. Now is the time for them to be patient with the public's desire to be heard in a public setting, on the record, no matter if it takes some additional weeks or even months. We will all reach a conclusion, but the people will not and should not feel pressured timewise. So I ask the members of the council to take the reasonable and sensible step of segregating this item from the consent agenda and voting to table it for now. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I do not believe there is anybody else on the phone line. So, Chief Executive Palmer, I don't believe anybody else is on the phone.
Okay, thank you for all the comments. They were good. Next, we'll go to approval of the minutes of the March 18th, 2020, regular meeting. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the March 18th regular meeting minutes.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to approve the March 18th, 2020, minutes. Is there anything on the question? Send your hand. So, will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
11, yes, is it not 12? 11, yes?
Okay. Motion carries. Takes me a minute to find the results here. So we do have one item not addressed on the agenda this evening, that's Communication 2020-155. So we'll have to have a motion for the suspension of the rules. So we'll have to have a motion for the suspension of the rules placed this on the agenda. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In accordance with the provisions of Section Six of Rule Six of the Rules of the Order of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte, Silver Bow, State of Montana, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow Communication twenty twenty dash one fifty five to be added to the agenda of the regular meeting of the Council of Commissioners. The reason for the suspension is as follows. Communication twenty twenty dash one fifty five is a communication from the Finance and Budget Director, Danette Gleason, requesting that the Finance and Budget Expenditure Approval List for the week of April twenty twenty, April first, I believe, be reviewed. This communication was submitted by the deadline for the April first, twenty twenty agenda, but was inadvertently left off the agenda. Based on the foregoing and in order to allow this matter to be acted upon, the council hereby finds that an emergency exists. Motion, at this time, I would make a motion to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing Council twenty twenty dash one fifty five on the agenda at the April first, twenty twenty regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to approve the suspension of the rules to place Communication twenty twenty dash one five five on tonight's agenda. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Twelve, yea, and zero nay.
The motion carries. We will take action on that one at the end of the consent agenda. Under the chief executives' report, I just want to say it's been a real busy couple of weeks with the COVID nineteen virus that's been going on. We have not been sitting back waiting for everyone else to do our job for us. And I just got the updated statistics from after four thirty this afternoon. So attached is our COVID nineteen count. The map, before, we were off one between the Butte Silver Bow's count and the state's count, but they are both lining up now with eleven confirmed cases in Silver Bow County. And as of four thirty P M. today, Montana has two hundred and seventeen confirmed cases. Five thousand and eighty-eight tests have been administered. Nineteen individuals are hospitalized statewide, and there have been five fatalities. In Butte, Silver Bow itself, we have tested one hundred and forty-seven patients. And statewide, as I said, five thousand and eighty-eight. So we're doing a pretty good job of doing that. The number of items that we have in as far as P P and E, we're not sitting back. We're in touch almost daily with the federal government and the state government, trying to get resupplied, but, you know, there's a lot of, the supplies are going to the states with the higher needs. So we did get a shipment today of some P P and E, the masks and stuff, but it wasn't as large as we had thought. Butte, Silver Bow has placed an order for several thousand masks, and they should be arriving hopefully within a couple of weeks, and we will go from there. But we'll keep everyone updated on this. One of the interesting things aside from the COVID thing, I think it ties in hand in hand, but through the state Suicide Prevention Hotline, in two thousand and nineteen, Lifeline took in six thousand five hundred and eighty-one calls, an average of eighteen calls per day. From March thirteenth to March thirty-first, twenty twenty, the same Lifeline took in seven hundred and five calls, an average of thirty-nine calls per day. It just shows that there's some other issues out there that are all related to this, and we have to be very vigilant. So please, check on your neighbors and talk to them, and if you see anything out of the ordinary, advise some help be brought in. I'll end that chief executives' report, and we'll move on to the Section One, Bit Openings, Public Hearings, and our presentations. We did have two public hearings scheduled this evening, but due to a conflict in advertising and other items, removing those are going to be re-advertised for April fifteenth. So we'll just move them, hold off on those. Next, we'll go to Section Two on the Consent Agenda. A, one through four, and B, one through twelve. Do we have any segregations, friendly amendments? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to segregate number nine.
John, I can't hear you.
Sorry, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate number nine, twenty twenty dash one five zero, and number eleven, twenty twenty dash one five two.
Nine and eleven. Are there any other segregations?
Commissioner Fisher?
Hey, Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. It's good to see you. Good to see everyone after not being at the meeting for a couple of weeks. I would like to segregate Communication number five, twenty twenty dash one four six.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Are there any other segregations? I see none. I'm claiming seeing that right. One for the approval of the consent agenda, A, one through four, B, one through twelve, exclusive of number five, number nine, and number eleven. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve Section Two, the Consent Agenda. A, Committee Reports, one through four. B, Communications, one through twelve, with the exclusion of number five, twenty twenty dash one forty-six, number nine, twenty twenty dash one five zero, number eleven, twenty twenty dash one five two.
Second. And we have a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, A, one through four, and B, one through twelve, exclusive of number five, number nine, and number eleven. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
One second, Mr. Chief Executive. Looks like we need two individuals to still vote. Would everyone please vote? We're still missing a couple individuals.
Ten, yea, and two, no.
Can you tell us who did not vote on that, Jason?
The motion carries. So next, we'll go into Committee Number Five. This is Communication twenty twenty dash one four six. Dan Olson, Butte Silver Bow Commissioner District Number Five, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive's concurrence for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Economic Mill Leve grants that were reviewed and agreed upon after our March eleventh, twenty twenty Economic Development Meeting. Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I would like to commend Commissioner Olson, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, for his work on distributing of the funds. There is one question I would like Mr. Olson to do. I would like him to send a report how each of the commissioners on the committee spent their eighty thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. He did send out how the money was distributed, which was very nice, but I think it would be a wise idea if he showed on every commissioner broke down their eighty thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. So if Commissioner Olson would do that, I would appreciate it. With that being said, without any other questions, I would make a motion to concur and place on file Communication Number twenty twenty dash one four six. Thank you.
Second, I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to concur in the request and place the communication on file Number twenty twenty dash one four six. Is there anything on the question?
One second, Mr. Chief Executive, okay?
Seeing none. Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, we're missing Commissioner Callahan.
Commissioner Callahan, did you vote?
And Commissioner Anderson.
Commissioner Anderson, would you vote, please?
Uh, I did vote, I did submit it, so it should be online there. If it's not showing up, I voted in the affirmative, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
How about you, Dan?
I voted yes.
Okay. Will the clerk please record the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive.
Twelve, yea, and zero nay.
We have twelve, yays, zero nays.
The motion carries. Let's go go to Communication Number Nine. Twenty twenty dash one five zero, Mark Neri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to authorize the chief executive to sign the Dewey Bates Three Engineering Agreement with H D R Engineering. With H D R Engineering. Commissioner?
Me. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I just wanted to let everybody aware, it was brought to my attention this evening that the agreement for Communication twenty twenty dash one five zero, the link was not working for the agreement online. So at this time, I would like to just make a motion that we refer Communication Number twenty twenty dash one five zero to the April fifteenth regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to refer the Communication twenty twenty dash one five zero to the April fifteenth meeting. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Any question to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Twelve, yea, and zero nay.
We're missing two people again?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We do have twelve yays and zero nays.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move to Communication Number Eleven, which is Communication twenty twenty dash one five two. John Morgan, Council of Commissioners Chair, informing Council of Commissioners and Chief Executive, I will schedule a meeting to receive comments on the Butte Priority Soil C D for April fifteenth, twenty twenty. Public is invited and encouraged to submit written comments starting immediately, all of which would be read into the public record on April fifteenth, twenty twenty. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I did submit this communication to this council in full respect of just going through a public meeting. As we talked about earlier, this year, we were going to hold a public hearing on this, on the consent decree and ask for public input. But as everybody knows, these last couple of weeks have been kind of different times for us with all the technology and the stay-at-home orders and everything like that. And I felt that it was important to try to continue business as usual as much as we could without stalling things, you know, for the indefinite time period, as the word that I used in the letter. The one thing that I do want to clarify is there is a rumor out there that my communication asked that we take action on the consent decree. That was not in the letter, that was not one of the suggestions in the letter. I simply was asking for an April fifteenth meeting to allow public comment to be read into the record, very similar to what you guys seen today, where we have written responses that we read into it. We allow for telephone calls to come into the council and allow people to leave those. I did, when I was writing this communication, I worked with multiple staff to make sure that we were covering everything. We did follow Attorney General's guidelines on still holding public meetings. As everybody knows, that just because we are in this pandemic, and hopefully we get out of it very soon, we are still able to conduct business at the council level and keep the Butte Silver Bow government running. The other thing that has been pointed out numerous times, and I appreciate the comments, is the fact that I asked for the public meeting to be on the fifteenth. Obviously, I overlooked that. I didn't realize that it was that definitive. I didn't intend it to be if this council feels that it needs to be extended, I'm for that. Keep in mind that when I submit a communication to the council, there's eleven other individuals that have the option of either agreeing or disagreeing with it and deciding if it's moving forward. By myself, I am not unilaterally making decisions for the council, even though I'm the chairman. Any other commissioner that would feel that there is a better avenue or a better method of moving things forward, they can submit communications as well. And so I did take it upon myself to submit a communication to try to keep the process going as much as we can. Yes, we are in a pandemic, and yes, things are different. But quite frankly, right now, I'm pretty pleased with the way that our council meeting is working. We have all twelve commissioners at home. I'm up at the courthouse to try to facilitate it as much as it is. It seems like it's working well, so it shows that we can adapt and overcome anything that comes before us. And so again, I know it wasn't maybe a perfect letter, but my intent was there to try to get public comment into the record, allow people to feel that they were being able to provide public input, and it was actually in the record. It was commented before that, you know, we were holding private sessions or meetings at our local commissioner districts, and that comment wasn't being recorded, and it wasn't in the record. So I wanted to make sure that we provide a way to do that. I felt that this communication did it, and again, if the council, one, decides this is a good avenue to start, that's great. If they decide that we need more than just one day to accept it, that's great as well. If we need to move it into the May sixth meeting, then so be it. The other thing that I would state is, again, people can submit comment to this body at any time. There doesn't have to be a communication directly asking for it, and I would encourage people to just continue to provide questions and comments on the consent decree. So that was my intent of the communication. I know it's blown out of proportion a little bit some places, but that was my intent. So, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I just want to add that, you know, this is a different time out there, and we're trying to move our government forward while continuing to do business. I actually think this meeting ran fairly well. For the first time, there's a few hiccups, but I think that it's going to work well. We will accept public comments by email, or they can drop them off in front of the courthouse in the drop box, and they will be read into the record, and they're welcome to call in on the night of the meeting. And if the council deems it necessary, you continue it until the next meeting, which would be the May sixth meeting. That's mine, too. It's up to the council, but I think that we're doing everything we can, given the circumstances, to move this government forward and continue the operation that we're here to do. Open it up for any other comments or questions? Can't tell who's raising a hand here.
Looks like Commissioner Soreich and Commissioner Fisher.
Hey, Commissioner Soreich, first.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive and fellow commissioners. You know, I'm going to support Commissioner Morgan's communication. I believe that this is just to start, you know, just to keep the ball rolling. You know, according to the letter in the Montana Standard, the letter that we read, you know, it's not an official, official call for a public hearing. Will be another public hearing, another chance to public hearing. We don't know how long this, oh, this is going to last. This might last, who knows how long? So I think we've got to keep things going as best we can and do what we can to try to, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing in there about taking a vote, there's nothing in there about, it's just to, like you said, just to keep the ball rolling and keep people an opportunity. You know, we've had some, we've had some letters, some different folks. Again, I'm just going to support. Um, again, I'm just gonna support, uh, Commissioner Morgan's, uh, communication.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sorch. Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer, thank you Chairman Morgan. I respect your, uh, intent, Mr. Morgan, and, uh, I think it was a great idea. But at this time, I think we must respect the, uh, pandemic that's going on and our community being a retirement community more than anything else. And I don't think there's anything more powerful than people speaking in person in front of the council. There's no doubt this meeting tonight went very well, although there was a little bit of the phone in the beginning and, uh, Arlene doing her best to read the letters, it still does not have the same effect that when people stand in front of twelve commissioners and look them in the eye and tell them what they feel. So I think we should respect, um, the people, we've been in this thing over thirty years. I mean, we shouldn't be in no hurry, the EPA, the state, um, ARCO, EP said they're in no hurry. I just don't know why we, you commissioners now would make a move to do something. I understand the intent of the letter, but I just think the public forum got in this in a, in a bad way for, uh, Mr. Morgan. I think it'd be a great idea if we just postpone this indefinitely, rather than, um, using the word indefinitely in the other way. So I will not be supporting this and I would like anyone else to weigh in, and if that, uh, takes place, I would be happy to make a motion to, uh, do as I explained after that. Thank you, Chief Executive, thank you Chairman Morgan.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, are there any other comments?
Looks like Commissioner O'Neill, Commissioner Mankins, Commissioner McDonough.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer, and, uh, thank you Chairman Morgan for putting this communication. Um, I understand if, you know, if we were gonna vote on this and it was gonna come down on the fifteenth, but I feel like we're providing another way for people to communicate about this and have public comment. And, uh, i- if anything, I, again, probably gonna repeat, um, what everybody else has maybe said, but we, we gotta keep this thing going and, and we don't wanna just wait. I mean, this is gonna go on for a while, we all need to really, um, think, I mean, look what's going on across the country, this isn't, we're not gonna end this at the end of the month, but so in my eyes, let's, let's keep the people, um, we gotta change, everybody's gotta change how this deal's gonna work, so whether it's a written letter, a call on the phone, I, I don't feel like it's a bad situation on, on, it, it's something more to offer to what we're dealing with right now, it's not in any way, shape or form, I feel like a disrespect. Now, if we were voting on this April fifteenth, yeah, I'm, I'm sure that we're getting scared here, but, um, w- were we gonna wait till January of next year? I mean, we're still giving three options for people to be able to comment on the consent decree. Um, and I feel like we all have to do this together, we can't just say, well, just because everybody can't get there to do that, I mean, everybody can write a letter, everybody can call on the phone, that's technology that dang near ninety-nine percent of the people should have. Um, if somebody needs to call any, any one of us or go pick up a letter from, sure, we do that as well, so. Um, again, if we're gonna, let's either shut the, let's either shut business down or let's roll, let's, let's keep business going. And this is part of the business, this is really important, we can't just put this away and forget about it, so. I, I really appreciate the, the getting forward and, um, we're gonna have to change everything and let's, let's, uh, I don't know, let's support it and go on and, and see what happens. Again, it's not, the public needs to realize that we're not voting on this on April fifteenth. That's the, that's the message I wanna get across, and thank you, I'll stop talking, give us a minute here.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Mankins?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chief Executive Palmer, Chairman Morgan and fellow commissioners. I just wanna point out, um, what, uh, Mr. Barrett, uh, stated in his, uh, own conversation, and thank you, Mr. Barrett, for calling in. Um, he stated that, you know, the public was not, you know, they sat for two hours and that was very, um, you know, that, that happened. So they sat for two hours and they weren't heard that night. But let's remember, they were heard. After that night, they couldn't speak with those public comments. They did call, they emailed, um, they talked to certain people on the phones, including myself, to deal with, um, the Timberview, um, situation that we had, that with the repository that was going on, that was going to go there, they weren't heard, but they actually were. So I would have to say that the, the public was heard through this process, democracy did work through this process. Everybody was heard without coming up to the council and to talk. So I would just like to, to point that out, that everybody, and I wanna thank him, Mr. Cecil and the Superfund team for doing what they're doing. And again, with Chairman Morgan putting this communication forward and continuing on with the process. I'd have to agree with Mr. O'Neill that, you know, if we were voting on this April fifteenth, I could see there'd be an issue with this. But I believe that there still is avenues with the, what we're facing as a, not just a city, a community, um, you know, county, um, everywhere in our country, um, that, you know, you can still go through different ways to be heard. So I just wanna, uh, reiterate that, that democracy did work at that time earlier, um, the Superfund team, E P T A. Uh, uh, Mr. Morgan? Everyone? This? Um, Palmer, we'll be heard at this time, so I just wanna thank you all.
I think Eric, you, you broke a little bit at the end, about the last minute, maybe or less than a minute. Um, I think we got the gist of it, but if you wanna repeat the very end of your statement, it might be good.
Hold on, Commissioner, oh, Mankins, you're, you're on mute.
Okay.
There you go.
My off. I just wanted to thank everybody that, uh, you know, that, uh, Mr. Cecil and the Superfund team and EPA and, uh, Chief Executive Palmer, um, that they did listen at this time and the public did have their opportunity to speak, um, through emails and through phone calls. So I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware of that. So this process still works and people are still heard, even with this process, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mankins. Commissioner McDonough?
Hey, Chief Executive Palmer and fellow commissioners, um, I would just like to concur with, uh, Commissioner Fisher. Um, I, I agree with everyone that, uh, you know, we've done a lot of good, hard work, um, towards keeping the process rolling and keeping the public involved. Um, however, you know, I feel that the public is due an opportunity to speak in person. You know, hopefully, and, and no one knows how long this, um, crisis or pandemic might last, but, you know, if we have the opportunity to gather here in a, or two, um, just so people have ability to comment in person, I think it's effective and it's, it's their public right. Um, I do believe, though, that we still take communication, um, through email and phone call and we're always available. You know, I'm always available as a commissioner to be reached out and you can share your communications as the, um, constituents can share information with all of us. So, so I believe that, yes, we do need to keep things moving forward. Uh, however, I do think that, you know, the public should be given the opportunity to be. We did have to cancel half of the coffee meetings that were scheduled, uh, leading up to, uh, the closure and, you know, kind of the shelter-in-place orders that came down. About half of the districts were able to get their communications in and, uh, have those meetings held. And, uh, you know, some of us didn't, so I, I would just, you know, concur with, uh, Commissioner Fisher, that we should give the public the opportunity to speak in person. And, uh, I do believe that we need, need to keep this is moving forward, but it's an opportunity that the public should have, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner McDonough. Are there any others commissioners that haven't spoken yet? I see Commissioner Mankins wants to speak again, but, um, are there any others that wanna go first?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw, Olson and Anderson have their hands raised and.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, fellow commissioners, and, uh, thank you for your leadership, Commissioner Morgan. Um, you know, this is tough because my district, I got a lot of elderly and I know that right now, most people are in survival mode. I know a lot of us are, and there are some people that don't have computers, they have no way of communicating, although we're offering about as big a selection of venues and, uh, opportunities. Um, we can always change the date, I, I think that we should, we need a placeholder, like I think most of us agree. We need a placeholder on the agenda to keep the, keep this out there, so people know we haven't forgotten about it, it's actually, you know, something that we want to do. Um, I'm not sure about the fifteenth, I mean, a week ago or two weeks ago when this came in, look what's happened in two weeks. There, there's a mystery, unknown element to this whole situation we're all going through right now. But I would like to keep this on here as a placeholder. I, I think, you know, if we decide that by the fifteenth is just not a good time to have a, you know, a big group of people trying to call in, I don't know, I have no idea where we're gonna be at, so. I would concur with the letter, I think it's important that people know we were not asking for any action whatsoever, other than placing this on, uh, at some time in the future to have an opportunity to really be good listeners and sit and listen to everybody at, at one time. So anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Olson?
Commissioner Olson, you're on, oh, I'm on mute.
Commissioner Olson?
Um, uh, can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I think the public needs an opportunity to, to comment on this in front of the council if they can, but, uh, that doesn't appear that it's gonna happen in the near future. I think that there are enough opportunities for people to call their commissioner, uh, to, uh, write something in, uh, to send an email, to get their, their comments understood or, uh, explained and understood by the commissioners. Um, we just need to remember that the upcoming vote, it is, it's not an essay question, it's a yes or no vote. And, uh, it's up to the commissioners to make that, uh, make that, uh, decision based on the input that they've, they've received, uh, up till now and through the public hearing process. I think that's important, but I think it's also important that we continue on this. Uh, we need to get this going, if we, uh, if we don't work up, if we don't work on it now and get, uh, get this settled and get it onto the EPA, who knows how long it is gonna be? Um, if it goes before them, let's say, two months, uh, who knows what the EPA is gonna be doing at that point? I think we need to proceed forward and I think the first step to get there is to get this public hearing. If we don't, if we don't get enough, uh, input during the public hearing and there are still questions out there, yes, we can extend it. But I don't know that we want to put this off for several months and, uh, I think, uh, I, I will be voting, voting to proceed, uh, with, uh, the, uh, public hearing at, uh, the April fifteenth meeting. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, everybody, uh, it's nice to see so many smiling faces tonight. I've missed you the past few weeks in my quarantine, but trying to keep you all healthy, I have a nasty cough, as you can probably see with my hacking over here. But, uh, thank you for putting this on this way. It's nice for me to be able to share and express my feelings. I wanna thank, one of my, uh, people I get to be lucky enough to represent, John Cecil, for being here tonight, thank you, John. And a few others who've commented on it, Mr. Barrett and a few others. Uh, I would very much like to have a public hearing, uh, in a format where people can come to the council and address the issues before us. I know there's quite a few people in our community who are elderly and honestly, they don't get technology. I've been, I've sent the last couple of days links and links and links to my mom to a YouTube channel so she could watch mass, and she was having a hard, I'm gonna get in trouble for this, I know I am. But, uh, hopefully, well, I know she's not gonna see this, so if Mike Smith is listening, please don't write this in the paper. But, uh, she has trouble opening up a link to get to mass on YouTube that I emailed her, where she just needs to click on the blue icon. So I think a lot of people in our community, especially the elderly, like my mother, I'm gonna get in trouble for that, so, regret that also, Mike. But, uh, have a trouble with technology and even understanding how this all works. And if they don't understand how this is working and going to go down, I think they're gonna have a hard time calling in and making those comments, writing letters or submitting emails and making those comments. I, and, uh, with the health concerns, this is a very serious matter, so I encourage everybody listening to stay at home, self-isolate, talk to us, let us know what's going on. I've had numerous calls and text messages and Facebook chats. Thank you, Michelle, for helping with that today on, uh, this matter. And, uh, I think it's important to keep the community involved, but I think it's also important to give them an opportunity to come before this body, hopefully sooner rather than later, I'm hoping. Keeping my fingers crossed, that'll be before June, because I'd love to see the class of twenty twenty walk across the stage at the Civic Center. I know these kids and so many families are worried about this, and I think it's something that, I, I don't see a need to rush this. Uh, I, I can't find any compelling argument to rush something that's been going on for, uh, fifteen, twenty years now. I don't see anything, reason to rush this. When the EPA, who helped write the document, his lawyers looked at it after it was submitted for five months, I think we can wait a couple of weeks or a couple of.
Your own, yeah.
If the case may be, in a time of pandemic, so I, uh, will jump on before Fisher gets a chance to, but I hope he'll second it or somebody else will, to leave this on file, but to postpone an actual public hearing, but leave this on file so people have an opportunity to make those comments, so they know that we are listening and that we are concerned about their, uh, their ideas on it. And I look forward to this vote and I imagine it will pass and I'm, will be all right with that. I think it's gonna help the community greatly, but I think we need to do this in the proper manner. And I think one of those things to do that in the proper way would be to stall any action on this, and I know it doesn't call for action, but to stall any action, keep on taking comments, but let's postpone the actual public hearing, public hearing, until things get a little bit back to normal and we can, uh, reconvene all together at the council chambers. We can all sit around, John, and we can have everybody come up to the audience and everybody can speak their piece and we can kind of celebrate this getting done and we can celebrate the end of the pandemic, so thank you all very much, it's great seeing you. Uh, please stay safe, please stay well and, uh, use your best guidance when dealing with this, uh, ordeal we're going through, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I didn't, uh, I can't tell if anybody else wants to speak, I saw Commissioner Mankins wanted to, uh, speak one more time, but I can't tell if anybody else wanted to go before him that hasn't, uh.
Commissioner Shaw?
Commissioner Shaw?
No, I don't mean to go first, I just, I had, I'm waving my hand, since I think Josh is also, and Jim. Go ahead, Michelle, I guess, whoever was first.
Commissioner Shane, if you would like to speak, you haven't had a chance yet, so you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, um, Chairman Morgan. Um, I do agree that there, there doesn't appear to be a huge hurry with this. However, um, I do think that it's important that we start taking formal action to hear the public, that's what they asked us for, that's what they asked us to do a few weeks ago, but we weren't able to involve them at that time. And I think it's really important that we allow that in two weeks, that we allow that formal comment, whether people can be there or not. Um, there are multiple ways to, to catch a meeting, um, I know older people know how to use a radio, I know they also know how to use a phone. Um, I, I don't see why we would. I, I don't see why we wouldn't want to encourage public comment in two weeks, even if we extend it and gather more comment in two more weeks, I think that's fine as well. And for, for anyone to say or to insinuate that the meetings that we didn't have in our neighborhoods or the, the input that we don't take from our, our constituents is somehow less valid and being spoken eye to eye at a council meeting, I would challenge that because some of the most meaningful conversations I've had around this issue have been over a cup of coffee with a small group of constituents over the phone, in an email, via text, and they're not just one-off, one-off conversations, those are conversations that have been ongoing for months, and some of those people are in very, very strong support of this consent decree. I don't know that they would even take the time to, to do their public comment because they've placed their faith and need to make that decision on their behalf. That being said, I like Commissioner Shaw's idea of a placeholder. I do think that as long as we have a rider on the agenda, that gives the public an opportunity to comment. I would like to also remind the public that you don't need a golden and gray invitation to comment on our, our issues. There is time at the end of every single meeting to public, public comment on any item not on the agenda, so you can speak to your little heart's content about any subject under the sun at that time. You don't need to have an invitation, it doesn't need to be anything special, just call, comment, send the emails when we get back to face-to-face meetings, show up, that's always, that's always appreciated as well. And the other thing I've learned in my short time on the council is people participate exactly as much as they want to. So you may have a few people shouting from the rooftops, "We need more public participation, we need more, we need more," and I would agree with those people. The hard reality is that we can't force people to participate, and even though we want more, just asking for more doesn't always get us more. So that's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Are there any other commissioners that haven't spoken yet that would like a chance? And we'll go back to Commissioner Mankins, he had his hand up, I saw one, right?
I just want to, just to point out, like, I understand what everybody is saying at this point, and that, you know, we need more time and the public needs, but I think that, you know, there's a lot of people that I'm looking at on this screen that are very educated and know in two weeks, this epidemic isn't going to be over, and we're not going to be face-to-face in two weeks. So I, I mean, I don't want to be like that person, but I think we're all smart enough to understand in two weeks, that there's still same communication, the same process that you're either going to have to email, call, or write a letter, or like Mr. Anderson said, go pick up the letter, that we're still going to have to do that. Schools are extended, schools will be extended till the end of April. I can see it even further than that. We are not going to be, we will be doing this in two weeks, three weeks. So where everybody wants to go with that, that's perfectly okay, but you have to remember that we're still going to be in the same situation in two weeks. We're not going to be face-to-face, we're not going to be sitting in, you know, fingers crossed, as Mr. Anderson said, but we're not going to be sitting in the chamber in two weeks. So I just want to make sure that everybody, you know, realizes this and stops trigger code now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mankins. Commissioner Shaw, did you want to speak?
Thank you. I just want to mention, I heard a couple of my fellow commissioners call this a public hearing. I do not believe that this is going to be noticed, you know, as an official public hearing. Is that correct, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Shaw, it is a public meeting that's, that allows public input to be entered into the record, just, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
Chief Executive Palmer, Commissioner Fishers has his hand up.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer, thank you, Chairman Morgan. You know, I agree with everything that's being said, I just don't know what the rush is here. I mean, there's got to be a push from something here that we're not seeing. We all understand this, every day that we wake up, it's two weeks, excuse me, two weeks from the month, two weeks, two weeks ago, two weeks from today. When does two weeks end? It's kind of like the, you know, it could go on for a long time. I don't see what the rush is. We did not allow the people to speak after we had to sit there for two hours. That is a major point in Bute's report. We are Bute people. Bute people like to visit eye to eye. They do not do social media, they don't like to write letters, they don't like to pick up the phone. My point is, what is the rush? Why don't we let these people that sat there for two hours before they were pushed out of the meeting without being able to speak, why not let them speak? Why not? I will make a motion at this time that we deny communication number 11-2020-152 and place it on file. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion made in second, deny communication, request communication 2020-152 and place communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner McDonough, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Well, I believe that there needs to be public participation, face-to-face, if we can do it, and we don't know where we're at with the timeline. I don't want to deny the communication. You know, I think we need a placeholder on the agenda that allows the public to submit comments. I think it's the perception in the public that 15th is the last time that we're going to listen to their opinion before we make our mind up and make a decision. Been a lot of good work by a lot of great people to move things forward. I think that needs to be recognized. I think the Bute deserves a definite cleanup, and I think that we're getting closer and closer to the mark, but just in the spirit of participation, I think that, you know, we should wait maybe two weeks, a month, and see where we're at, and then determine it from there, but at this time, I'll make the, you know, protocol, make a substitute motion, do we leave the communication on the agenda and hold it in abeyance, so that the public can continue to make comment? And then at that time, you know, if it's possible, schedule a face-to-face in the council chambers, public hearing.
Second. We have a motion made in second to hold this communication in advance, but schedule public, accept public hearing on the 15th and continue it as long as necessary until the council sees fit, is that, did I get that right, Brendan?
Yes, Executive Palmer.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion?
Question, Commissioner, Chief Executive.
Anything on the question?
Commissioner Morgan, yeah.
Question from Mr. Fisher.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher.
Chief Executive Palmer.
Kathy, can he not see everybody?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I would withdraw my communication and support Brendan's communication.
Your motion on that?
I would make a motion to withdraw my communication on 2021-152 and support Brendan's communication.
All right.
Anderson was the one to second.
Hey, Commissioner Anderson, are you going to consent to that?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Is there anything on the question of the, the other motion?
I, I do, Chief Executive Palmer, I don't know if you can see me or not.
I did, too, John Sartre, Commissioner Sarge.
Okay, Commissioner Sarge.
I'll thank Mr. Chief Executive, I guess I'm a little bit confused, what's the difference between Commissioner Morgan's communication and what Commissioner McDonough is opposing?
Basically, nothing other than it can be continued after, and either way, it's all the same, I think.
Okay.
Commissioner Morgan has been waving his hand for 20 minutes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I, I really do appreciate all the comments that we have here tonight, and, and that really is one of the things that, I brought this forward as well, just to start the, the discussion, and it's good to hear what everybody else has to say with it. The, the one thing that I'm hearing tonight is, is the biggest concern is that it was on the 15th, and, and I, like I said, I can, I can amend that to, to go longer if, if that's what people are asking for. I, I know Mr. Sesso is, is with us as well, and I don't know if he has anything to add on any thing that's been brought up tonight, but I would just ask Mr. Sesso if he has anything to add before I make a, a final remark.
Well, thank you, Chairman Morgan. I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, the idea of starting this process to receive as much public input as possible through your communication tonight, to, to, to experiment with the process again on, on April 15th, it's based on your next communication, number 12, on tonight's agenda, where you determined there would be no more committee of the home meetings till further notice, and based on my information that I get through the state, that this, this shelter in place order is probably going to be extended well into the future, that it's going to be a while before we're going to get back to normal, and there are many pieces of business that will come before the council in the weeks and months ahead. And the process we have outlined in this communication where we're going to have a virtual meeting on the 15th, based on the discussion so far, that the comment period would be extended at least to the end of the month, if not longer, and then we can reassess where we're at, in terms of how many more people want to have a public comment and, and, and address the council face-to-face, we, we can reassess. Then when we actually do submit council communication to approve the consent decree, that will kick off yet another process that will allow public comment and your deliberation. So it, it's always difficult for me to hear how anybody would consider what we've been doing as a rush. I, I don't think we've rushed through anything in the super fund process. The content of this consent decree, while there were certain financial details that were released on February 13th, the bulk of the information was actually released in, in the spring of 2019, almost a year ago, and so there was a public comment period for that, and there was significant input made by our public through the public comment roster that the EPA put together. If you look at Appendix A and the, in the responsiveness summary, all those comments were responded to by, by the EPA with the support of all the parties. So I like the idea of having a virtual public meeting on the 15th, see how it works, see how many people submit written comments between now and the end of the month, and then allow ourselves to reassess on whether it's still necessary to, to wait for a face-to-face. I'm afraid that that will be a significant point in the future, not in May, perhaps not even in June, and there's just going to be a lot of business before this council that's going to have to be disposed of between now and then, and although I appreciate the comments that have been made about the desire to have a face-to-face opportunity, I think we've got to bend to the realities of the day and, and try these new tools and try to see if they accommodate that need that, that the public has expressed, and that you have expressed on behalf of the public. We've heard a lot of public comment, we've, we've incorporated a lot of public comment into the document already. We, we never expected that it was going to please everybody on every matter, but it's a great product. We are actually anxious to move it forward so that nobody else backs out of all of the hard-won terms of the agreement that, that, that are incorporated in it. So a lot can change in the months ahead. I, I just think it's important that we keep the process going, that we have the meeting on the 15th, how well it works, see how much public comment we get, and make a, a judgment call at the end of the month, how much longer we should keep the public comment period open. Chairman and Chief Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Sesso, Commissioner O'Neal, and Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and all you guys' comments, I appreciate it. Mr. Sesso, I feel like during this crisis we've lived in our lives, I think it'd be a disservice to the community to not offer a public comment on the 15th, to wait any time for another public comment, it's crazy. This thing is fresh in our minds, we're trying to make this happen. Given the, I mean, what about the disservice to the people that, that want to come online right now and look at this and want to write letters? Let's think about that, too, but let's, if any, this is another option and another tool for our community to reach out to us to talk about the consent decree, and it's keeping it going, it's not giving a disservice to, if anything, it's another service that we're providing, it's, if anything, kicking it down the road and, and waiting until we're going to meet again. You know, I hope we're meeting each other very shortly, but again, we're not, you guys. Yes, we're, we're months away from this ending, okay? So, again, I'll stop here, we are disrespecting our community if we hold off public comment. Again, the public needs to realize we're not voting on this on the 15th. The public wants to talk, we're letting them speak on the consent decree on the 15th. I, I don't, I don't get it. They want to make comments, here you go, this is worth making opportunity now, why wait till the end? I mean, let's, let's make this happen, so appreciate you letting us talk.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan, and then Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I guess I'm, I'm ready to make a, a motion, to end all motions, and, and I believe it, it will achieve maybe what Commissioner McDonough is after, and we can have a discussion, but, like I said, it seems like having the, the public meeting on the 15th and only the 15th seems to be one of the biggest issues before us. I mean, I, I would make a motion that we concur with Communication 2020-152 and hold the public meeting on April 15th and May 6th, which is our next regular meeting after the 15th, and then, then reassess at that point of, of what's, what's necessary moving forward. So I hope that would alleviate some of the, some of the concerns with that. So that's my motion, that we would concur with Communication 20-152 and hold the public meeting on the 15th and May 6th.
Second. We have a motion to end all motions, that it's that we start the public meeting on April 15th and continue it till May 6th and reassess at that time. Is there, on the question, I think Commissioner Callahan had his hand up first, and Commissioner McDonough, and then...
Thanks, Chief Executive Palmer, Chairman Morgan. I totally agree with Mr. Sesso. These folks have worked and worked and worked for this, and they've been hard at it. It's a very positive thing for our community, and I think it's time to give the public their opportunity, keep dragging it out and dragging it out until this epidemic is over, is crazy. Let's move forward with this, let's move forward with our community. The people have had plenty of options up to this point to have their time to talk about it. There was close to 30 opportunities prior to all this for people to speak, and many people have. So I, I, I agree with Commissioner Morgan's communication, and I think it's time to move forward.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Please, someone else had their hand up. Commissioner Olson, and then Commissioner McDonough.
Commissioner Olson, we're not hearing you.
Yeah, I'm mute, maybe.
Nope, now he's on mute.
Nope. One more time, Dan.
We didn't want to hear you anyway, so. Go ahead, one more time, Dan. Maybe we'll go to Commissioner McDonough, and then we'll go back to Commissioner Olson. Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I can, I mean, I'm aboard with what Commissioner Morgan says there, that, you know, we can have two. have two opportunities for public input. I mean, my comments weren't that we shouldn't gather public input, it was just the 15th is a sticking point for many folks, I think, in our community, at least quite a few that I've heard from. So if they have two opportunities and then we can evaluate, my question would be procedurally, will you just extend the date or the public comment period in May if things seem to change? Or, you know, depending on the timeline, whether we can meet or not in person, which doesn't look like it's going to be the situation, we can just hold it, maybe have another opportunity for input, maybe two weeks out after that, and then make a decision?
Yeah, I think the motion pretty much covered that, and that we would accept the comment on April 15th, and then on May 6th, and then reassess from that date forward. I want to point out that written comment and emails will be accepted as long as we're accepting the written, the voice comments, too. So I think it covers everyone, gives them ample opportunity to, hopefully this thing will end next week, but.
Right.
We seriously doubt it, so we'll try Commissioner Olson again, do you want to try it one more time? See if we can hear you? Talk louder. Okay. Hold up a piece of paper with your hands. Any other comments?
Call for the vote, please.
Okay. Will everyone please vote? Everyone understand the motion? Everyone please vote.
Would you read the motion one more time, Chief Executive Palmer?
The motion was to start soliciting the public comment at the meeting on April 15th. Actually, we're accepting it right now, the written and the emails, but we will have public comment on April 15th, again on May 6th, and at the May 6th meeting, we'll reassess the situation, may vote on it at that time, or move it a little bit further out. I think that's the intent of the motion, is that correct, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, yeah. The motion on your guys' screen says the motion to end all motions, concur with Communication 2020-152, hold a public meeting on April 15th and May 6th, and reassess at that time.
Okay. Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk record the vote?
Jason, are you missing anybody?
I'm drawing 11. Voting?
Who's missing?
I hear you put some bit after your vote.
Mr. Chief Executive, we're still missing one vote. I can't tell you who right now, though. Did everybody make sure that they voted with the blue dot and then submit?
I have Olson voted yes. So I found all.
Okay, Mr. Chief Executive, we have all the votes.
Okay, will the clerk please record the vote?
Twelve yea and zero nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like it's twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have to go to Communication 2020-155, this is the one who suspended the rules. The communication is a communication from Finance and Budget Director Danette Gleason requesting the finance and budget expenditure pool list out of the book of April, wanting to be reviewed. This communication was submitted by the deadline for April 1st, was inadvertently left off. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'm just going to read the body of the letter that stated March 26th from Danette Gleason, Director of Finance and Budget Department. Dear ladies and gentlemen, I am writing to request a review of the weekly expenditure approval list for the week of April 1st, 2020, in the amount of $433,382.59. The expenditure approval list will be made available to all commissioners and placed on the Butte Silver Bow website every Tuesday by 6:00 PM. Upon your review, please note and place this communication on file. If you have any questions, please contact Danette Gleason, Director of Finance and Budget Department. So that was the communication that we had. At this time, I would make a motion that we note communication and place on file.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded to note Communication 2020-155 and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please re-record the vote?
One second. Okay, we have him, Chief Executive Palmer?
Twelve yea, zero nay.
We have twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll go to Court Districts and Resolutions.
We have one on second reading, Chief Executive Palmer.
Council Bill Number 2020-02. Will the clerk please read the title?
Bill number.
I'll read it.
Those darn courthouse ghosts.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, I will step in, and I know I won't do as good of a job, but I will give it my best. Council Bill Number 2020-02, Ordinance 2020-02, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 204, Section 4, and Chapter 10.40, entitled Speed Limits, of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, specifically amending Sections 1, 0.40, .040, and providing for an effective date herein. So, Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, I'll make a motion that we place Council Bill 2020-02, Ordinance 2020-02, on second reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
And just so everybody knows, this will appear next week, or the next.
I think that was a final reading, John, not a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw, it is actually a second reading.
So a motion made and seconded to pass Council Bill 2020-02, Ordinance 2020-02, on second reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Jason, do we have them all?
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, we have twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to Resolution Number 2020-12. Will please read the title, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Resolution, oh, this is a motion for suspension of the rules, so. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Bill, or Council Resolution 2020-12, and Resolution 2020-13, for the purpose, or by waiving subsection 7 of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to suspend the rules to pass Council Resolutions Number 2020-12 and 2020-13, final reading without reference to the Judiciary Committee. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote?
I don't have it up on my screen yet to vote.
There you go.
Thank you.
Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
We're missing one vote, Chief Executive. We have it.
Okay. Will the clerk please record the vote?
Twelve yea, zero nay.
We have twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Or got Resolution Number 2020-12. Please read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Resolution Number 2020-12, A Resolution Amending the Budget During the Fiscal Year After Conducting a Public Hearing at a Regularly Scheduled Meeting of the Council of Commissioners in accordance with Section 7-6-4006, MCA, Appropriating Unanticipated Revenue to the Butte Silver Bow Health Department from the U.S. Food and Drug Administration grant, and Providing for an Effective Date Herein.
Second.
Nope.
A motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 2020-12 on final reading.
Mr. Chief Executive, I haven't made the motion yet. I was just reading the title. So let me make the motion. I move to place Council Resolution 2020-12 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Yeah, I repeat, we have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 2020-12 on final reading. Is there anything on the question?
Looks like Commissioner Anderson has a question.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive, thank you, Chairman. This is probably ignorance on my behalf, but did we have the public hearing on this? I've been gone for a few weeks, so I'm not really sure. I believe we did.
Yes, we did. It was Karen Sullivan's.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure, like I said, I missed the last few, so, thank you.
Anything else on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Waiting for one. Okay, we have them all, Mr. Chief Executive. We have twelve, twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to Resolution Number 2020-13.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Resolution 2020-13, A Resolution Amending the Budget During the Fiscal Year After Conducting a Public Hearing at a Regularly Scheduled Meeting of the Council of Commissioners in accordance with Section 7-6-4006, MCA, Appropriating Unanticipated Revenue to the Butte Silver Bow Health Department from the National Association of Chronic Disease Directors, to provide services under the NACDD grant, and Providing for an Effective Date Herein. So. Yes, Mr. Chief Executive, I would like to make a motion to move Council Resolution 2020-13 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, second.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution Number 2020-13 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? And will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Just waiting for one last one.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, we have twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Next is Resolution Number 2020-16.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Resolution Number 2020-16, A Resolution Authorizing the Election Administrator for the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, Montana, to conduct the June 2nd, 2020, primary election as a mail ballot election. At this time, Mr. Chief Executive, I move to place Council Resolution 2020-16 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 2020-16 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? None, will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk record the vote?
Just waiting, oh. Waiting for me.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, we have twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Now's the time for any public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. I guess we'll go to the phone lines, unless there was any written comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, there was no written communication, so at this time, I will open up the phone lines. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, I don't believe I have anybody on the phone.
Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to thank all of the IT Department and everyone else who worked on making this happen. I think it's going to get us through this rough period of time, and we'll be able to conduct as scheduled, so I just really want to thank them all.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, hearing no more, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Come on, everyone.
Hey, sounds good. Hi.
Aye.
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 Well, thanks a lot, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, my guys, take care.
You too. Thank you.